All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, August 13th, 2024. It is 9:04 a.m. My name's Tim Answer, Chair of the Board. My left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Kalina Mahia on Zoom, and Commissioner Klaus will be joining us on Zoom and then in person shortly. We're here till 11:00 to review primarily the draft agenda for next Tuesday's Board Meeting of August 20th, and then our standing items. Public virtual attendance is available on Thurston County YouTube channel. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Rob Gelder and Josh Cummings, as well as Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. And let's jump into Item One, Review of the August 20th Draft Agenda. Calling the meeting in order at 2:00 p.m., Pledge of Allegiance to be Led by Commissioner Mahia. Approval of Agenda. Two Presentations Scheduled. One is Proclamation for Target Zero.
Yes, for Target Zero, Tara Teshlana is the Target Zero Program Manager in the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. She will be in attendance along with some of her community and law enforcement partners to jointly accept the proclamation.
Okay, any questions on that one? The second proclamation or presentation is a proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day.
Katie Strozak from Public Health and Social Services, along with a few other PHSS representatives will be in attendance. We also invited the Opioid Response Task Force and the Coroner to attend. So I'll have a better head count for both proclamations later this week.
Okay, questions from the Board? Either of those, okay. Then we'll have the opportunity for the public to address the Board. County Manager update.
I can report right now.
Consent Items, 3A through 3F. 3A is Superior Court Contract Award for Superior Court Treatment Services.
Okay, real quick, would you want to note the added items this time, or just?
Yes, we have two items that are expected to be added this week to next week's agenda. One item is for the MOU between the Commissioners' Office and the Auditor's Office for the Governance and Administration of the Preliminary Budget Process. The second item is a resolution for the purchase of 18 vehicles and portable radios for the Sheriff's Office. Both of these items will be emailed to you later this week, once they are ready, next week's agenda review.
They're not quite ready yet, hoping to provide some background and see.
Okay, so just a heads up that there's some ads coming, and those will be the following items, or can you send, you know?
Leave that resolution for the purchase of the Sheriff's Vehicles and Radios could be a consent item, would be a department item.
Yeah, the vehicle purchase, and I see that Bruce is here. Bruce, why don't you come on up for a sec? We can give you a quick overview, conceptually, and I know that Josh Cummings is also working on this. But there is a backlog, and it's hard to find the vehicles. With the Sheriff bringing in and hiring so many new deputies, we're having a hard time having the vehicles ready for them. And so what we're looking at is presenting something to the Commissioners. We're still working out all the details, but presenting something to the Commissioners where Bruce is authorized to purchase the vehicles in real time, rather than having to wait cycles, which only creates a lot of delay. Bruce and Josh, you want to provide any additional background?
I'll jump in real quick and then hand it over to Bruce. So Ford Motor Company has an order window, an order window where we can have vehicles ordered. We're not sure when that window is going to close. It's currently open. And so we needed to provide a resolution to the Board for us to allow the purchase of those 18 vehicles, which we believe we'll receive in 2025, but we need to order them now while the window is open. And so this authority that the Board approves allows for that. And the funding will eventually come from the Public Safety Sales Tax. Anything to add, Bruce? Remember the microphone's up there.
Yes, so the Sheriff's Office has a budget, has approval for 18 additional positions in 2025. So Fleet needs to get the vehicles to provide to the deputies in 2025. If we wait until '25, we probably won't have them until '26. So what we're going to ask to do is accelerate the purchase of these vehicles, get them on order now, so we can better support the Sheriff's Office next year with the additional positions.
And I think what's key about getting the approval of order now, they won't all come now. We just get into the queue, then allows us not to be a year behind the game, which then creates a lot of operational issues for the Sheriff. When a deputy is ready to hit patrol, they don't have the available vehicle. So we're trying to change that dynamic, and we've been working with the Sheriff's Team, and we appreciate his coordination and working with Bruce and Bruce's creativity with a different approach.
And I'll caveat this, even at August 20th, when we receive your approval, we have no control over what Ford decides to do with the order window. So we're taking our best shot with all of the pieces that we can control, but worst-case scenario, Ford Motor Company closes the window before we get the approval next week, and we can't order for 2025. But we're going to try everything we can to not have that happen. And your resolution approval is key to that.
Is there any reason that, I mean, are you ready to go if we were to do it today somehow?
We have one final legal review from Scott Cushing that we're waiting for, but other than that, we're...
I mean, if it's that crucial, and we don't want the window closed, why couldn't we contemplate?
You could. We can take that offline, Commissioner, and see. You know, our desire is, in response to the Sheriff's Need, to make sure that he doesn't have a bottleneck due to available resources. So in our review, Scott Cushing's, if it's, if the risk of the window closing sooner is a major problem, we can bring that sooner than.
They're short now.
They are.
Yeah, they're short currently on vehicles.
That's something that we, again, we appreciate the Sheriff bringing it to my attention to figure out what's a better approach, and thankful for Bruce and Josh looking at this creatively to figure out how do we create as much flexibility as possible to keep things moving in the pipeline.
Okay, thank you. Before we go on, I see several public health folks on. I just, was there anything that you guys wanted to address with the opioid overdose awareness day? I see Katie Strozak, I see Dr. Freihite. Just in case we passed you by there.
I don't think we have anything, but I'll let Katie answer.
No, I don't have anything to add. Like Amy said, we did invite the entire Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force, and we asked them to, to give kind of a heads up if they were planning to attend, so that we could get the head count to Amy as soon as possible.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Then let's look at Consent Item 3A, Superior Court Contract Award for Superior Court Treatment Services.
Yeah, I think our Superior Court Representative isn't available to make it today. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, let's go through this item real quick here. So this is the move to award a contract Pierce County Alliance for Superior Court Treatment Services in the amount of $93,942, with a term of July 1st through June 30th, to authorize Superior Court Administrator to execute the contract, and up to a two-year contract renewals for any amendments. And if there are any questions, we can take those back to Superior Court.
I know we've had contracts with Pierce County Alliance in the past, so it's potentially just a re...
For years, yeah.
It should be a pretty standard item. Any concerns?
But if there's any questions, just, we can, we've got a week to address them. Let's move on to 3B, Treasure Item, Sale of Tax-Titled Property Via Private Negotiation to Thurston County Public Works. County Treasure.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. This is the end of a long road on this little tiny piece of property that's generated a lot of conversation. This is a property that's located adjacent to property the county owns for the Boston Water, Boston Harbor Wastewater Facility. And we brought to you before, we had a private offer. It generated some angst within the neighborhood association there. And at the end of several meetings, several negotiations, it was determined that Public Works actually has a use for the property. And so what's before you today is a sale agreement that we negotiated with Public Works to sell the property to them.
Very good. Questions for Jeff? I don't see any questions. Yep, I've got... Any conversations about it?
Thanks for your work, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we look at 3C, CPED, Setting a Joint Public Hearing with City of Lacey for Annexation Interlocal Agreement. Jeremy Davis, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeremy Davis, Operations Manager with Community Planning and Economic Development. Yeah, so when we last spoke to you in late July, we requested your thumbs up to move forward with the public process on the proposed annexation agreement with the City of Lacey. Subsequent to that, we sent out the notifications, as we said we were going to do, to the affected jurisdictions, and that includes Thurston PUD, Fire Districts Three and Eight, and of course, the Transportation Benefit Districts. This is the next step in that process, and that next step is for the Board to formally set the public hearing, the joint public hearing with the City of Lacey City Council for October 1st. And just so you know, we have worked with the Clerk of the Board and City of Lacey staff on setting up this hearing date for a joint hearing. And of course, we're expecting this to be a hybrid hearing. We do expect to talk to City of Lacey some more on the exact details of the hearing night and what's going to happen on that, but we do need to actually have you set this. The reason why we're coming to you now is that, starting on August 29th, we need to publish a notice for four weeks ahead of that hearing. So we need the Board to set the hearing before we start publishing that notice. That notice will include a notice of availability of the annexation agreement itself, a notice of when we're going to hold a public open house with the affected neighborhoods, and then also the hearing date. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Jeremy, who's going to be the staffer going forward on that?
The staffer going forward on annexations right now would be Andrew Bond, out of the Community Planning Division. And I've been working with him and bringing him on board on everything that we're doing, on all of the annexation efforts we're working on right now, so.
The calendar appointment that I have shows 5:00 p.m. It might have just been a placeholder, and then your, the item says 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, we're still waiting. The time on the motion may change by next Tuesday. We're going to confirm the specific time with the City of Lacey prior to us coming to the Board on that afternoon. So the 5:00 p.m. was a placeholder. We're trying to work on a specific time with their staff.
Okay, questions? Nope? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
3D, Emergency Services, Emergency Medical Services Council Bylaw Revisions. Ben Miller, Todd.
Good morning. Just briefly, the EMS Council Bylaw Committee was established in January of this year by the EMS Council. That committee is made up of our Chair, Vice Chair, two at-large citizen representatives, and our Operations Chairperson. Consideration was made for adopting, I would say, a broader, more representative EMS Council to reflect the needs of the community as it sits right now. EMS Council bylaws have not largely been updated for the last 10 to 15 years, and so there are some significant changes that were made. Three of those changes, I just want to highlight very quickly what some of those changes were. Were an increase in a municipal representative to acknowledge those communities that were over 10,000. Yalma has grown to a size that is greater than 10,000. We wanted to acknowledge the changing environment and the growth in our communities. Additionally, we wanted to make sure we had a representative from our tribal community, as well as from our hospital, a hospital representative on the community, on the committee, excuse me. Additionally, I say additionally a lot, I apologize. With that, terms have changed. Just a couple of them we wanted to define. We wanted to make sure residents at large were defined as three-year terms, but we wanted to make sure they were staggered. Instead of transitioning all of our representatives out in the same year, we were looking to stagger those representatives, as well as making our hospital and tribal representatives two-year terms that additionally reflected the way that they're written in our bylaws, or that the Board of Health representative that is tribal would not be the same community that's represented on EMS Council. So we increased the representation from our tribal communities within Thurston County government. Lastly, we did add a Behavioral Health Representative, as well as a Thurston County Public Health, Public, excuse me, Public Health Representative for the Operations Committee to reflect the needs within our community, especially with the opioid epidemic, as well as behavioral and mental health needs throughout our community, which are affecting all of our residents. With that, I open it up for any questions you might have. Oh, excuse me, one more thing. The EMS Council unanimously recommended this version of the EMS Council bylaws at their meeting on June 27th.
Okay, can you run down all the representative groups that are on the council?
Yeah, on the EMS Council?
Yes.
Absolutely. So in terms of the 13 EMS Representatives, those are included within the packet. There's an elected official that represents each of the municipalities that are over 10,000. That would be four representatives that are there. Additionally, there's an elected official from the ALS contract, all ALS contracting agencies. Just so you're aware, this adds a representative for Lacey Fire District Three to the committee, since they are the contracted agency instead of the City of Lacey, just to make that clear. There are three at-large positions. There are also three fire commissioner positions, one tribal representative, one chief executive hospital representative, an ex officio Thurston County Commissioner representative, the medical program director, the operations chairperson, those last three are non-voting, just so you're aware, as well as an emeritus position that is non-voting.
So that there was, prior there was one South County representative, and now that's just been converted to a Yalma representative?
It's been converted to a realm representative, with the understanding that the representation for EMS services provided to those communities are based in the fire districts that support them. And so with that, the three fire commissioners represent those communities in terms of the EMS support for the EMS Council that's representing those communities.
Three fire commissioners at large throughout?
Yes.
Okay, but there's no longer a representative for the South?
Specifically not for the...
South Thurston County communities. How many, you said 13 people, but then you mentioned a lot of non-voting members. How many votes?
13 votes. So when I, when I say 13, it's 13 votes. There's 17 total. Four of those are non-voting.
Who are the non-voting again?
The ex officio position for the county commissioners, the MPD or Medical Program Director, as well as the Operations Committee Chairperson sits as a non-voting member.
Could you...
And there's an emeritus.
And there's an emeritus position as well.
You've shown me the flow chart a couple of times, but, or not flow chart, but, you know, the organizational structure, but you were talking about EMS Council, but then you jumped to Operations Committee that was called?
Yes.
Could you just kind of outline at a high level for the public, like, how many, just what the structure looks like, EMS Council versus whatever's underneath that versus the Board?
I'll do that broadly.
Yeah.
For the public, since they don't have a figure in front of them.
Yeah.
But broadly, the EMS Council sits as the Advisory Committee to the Board of County Commissioners. They have a subcommittee that's within these bylaws, which is why we're talking about Operations Committee as well. There's an Operations Committee that sits below the EMS Council. There are also two other committees that are ad hoc, both the ALS Contract Committee, as well as our Budget Committee. And then subsequent to that, I'm going to leave it very broad, there's another six additional operational committees that help to support the EMS operations throughout the county.
I think that's kind of important to understand, the complexity of what you've got.
There's roughly 100, 100 uniquely different individuals that are involved in these committees throughout the, throughout our structure.
Are you sure I have anything I might add? We've got best EMS service in the Northwest, I think.
I'll take it.
All right, so I'm going to have to speak to my peers. I have a meeting with kind of District Four folks on Friday, but I mean, I would like to see, I mean, I don't, I don't hear anything that says there's individuals specifically within my district that are on, required to be, you know, at-large is different than, you know, a mayor or a fire commissioner, or something within District Four is on the commission. So I'm just getting a little heartburn over that. And I'll, I'll talk to them, see if they're, if there's additional heartburn from them, and then I'll probably be pounding my fist on the table later.
I think it's important to realize, when you're looking at the structure, that there's a lot of, in terms of your three ALS contracting agencies and municipalities, and those specific areas that are called out, it then excludes those fire commissioners from those areas for being duplicately, at least as it's written in the bylaws, from being duplicately represented. So in terms of acknowledging that there's an ALS contract representative from Lacey, in terms of Lacey Fire District Three.
That means they wouldn't be a Commissioner.
That would not be available.
Yeah.
So there's three, that's where the support came from, the three commissioners. Like I said, it's unanimously supported. The three commissioners that currently sit on the EMS Council are, excuse me, are represented throughout the, I would say, suburban and rural areas of Thurston County. So we make sure that we have those representatives available, not specifically for the urban component, but also acknowledging the suburban and rural components in this county. And Chair?
Yes, sir. And maybe you could just explain how those three fire commissioners are chosen?
Yes. The way in which they're chosen per the bylaws is that we actually defer to the Fire Commissioners Association for Appointment, and that the Fire Commissioners Association actually appoints those three, and they cannot be from the same districts. And so it promotes another three additional districts that are not represented in the urban, I would say, core, municipalities or the urban core. So by default, it spreads out the representation.
All right, thank you, Ben.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Next item on Consent is 3E, Human Resources Resolution for Changes to Position Control. Maria Ponte, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Maria Ponte, HR Director, with he is Tara Wickline, Competition and Benefits Manager. And we're here today to request authorization for three specific items. They, these have resulted either from authorizations through last year's budget or through budget amendment. The first one is to adopt a new classification for the Community Planning and Economic Development Department. The title is a Natural Resources Program Manager, and this position is paid out of Fund 4530. That's the Mitigation Program Administration. The cost of this position, pay and benefits in 2024 is $83,000, and in 2025, that'll be a full year at $170,000, $172,000. Do you have any questions about that item?
So it's, it's creating a brand-new classification?
It's a brand-new classification. And if you have any specific questions about it, we do have members of CPED here that would be happy to answer any questions. Not, not Josh, but we've got Ashley here, and we have Jeremy here.
Commissioners, if I can just jump in, I want to thank Maria and HR team. They are working on an approach. As we discussed, the policy level for our classifications, they've started to make progress, had a couple of great meetings. We're developing a form. We had some change in staff, so they'll be re-engaging this summer, wants to get her feet under her. But we look forward to bringing that forward. Maria, just to clarify, these items, the ones on the agenda today, they don't necessarily impact the general fund, is that correct?
They do not. So for, into the future, for positions that impact general fund, that's what we're looking at, a policy and working more with budget to see what the future implications are, not just like the current year and a department absorbing it, but what are the financial impacts in the years to come.
So there, there still is a financial review done for positions that are not part of the general fund, but obviously, since there are different funding sources, they're confirming that they can not only support the increase for the current year, but operationally the increases for about years. And that's done on the back end with staff in the department, the budget team, and HR.
Commissioners, have an update from County Manager on, basically on that point. Just, I happened to see it yesterday, and if you've got, if you haven't had a chance to catch up, it's in your inbox, but go ahead, Commissioner, I would say.
That's the email that the County Manager sent out.
Yeah.
Is that going to address the issues that we've talked about on classification, where there's quite a few employees that work in the county, and a new employee comes on and has negotiated a higher entrance pay? So you've got people that have been here longer making less than the new person that comes. Is that going to be addressing that as well?
I'll field that one. Maria's working with, she's working with our legal team. I think they're in final review on some policy changes that will give the organization flexibility that we don't have right now to make adjustments under the guidelines of recruitment and retention. And so where we've identified that maybe there's some policies that don't afford us the flexibility to make some of these business decisions, when it comes to retaining folks or folks that are going to leave, or additional pay, but we have the ability, if they want to stay, to make some adjustment, or make adjustment in real time, that's what she's putting together. And so we, we will hopefully have that in like several weeks, ready to come back for final review, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me which position is being extended in prosecuting attorney's office? Or are you going, you haven't...
Yeah, I was just going to go chronological.
Okay, so.
So moving on to the second item, this is actually a correction that was inadvertently left off Amendment One. And the Board had authorized the extension of a position with an end date. It was due to end June 30th of 2024. You authorized it to be extended to June of 2025. And so we're seeking... And so we're seeking authorization to correct position control, and this position is paid out of Blake Fund, so no, no general fund involved.
It's a Blake position.
It's a Blake position. And the third item, this one was approved due, through budget adoption for the 2024, 2025 budget. And so HR and Public Health had multiple conversations about the position and verifying the duties that would fit into the Senior Program Manager position. This position is also non-general fund and is funded by the Treatment Sales Tax. And it was, well, it's currently a Program Manager, so the reclassification to Senior will increase it by fourteen thousand dollars per year at the top of the range. And my, is this a filled position?
It is.
It's a filled position, so there is, there is an incumbent.
Questions from Maria? Okay, thank you.
I have one more. It's the next item.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, not seeing anything there. All right, let's go to 3A. Also, HR, Public Works Resolution to Reclassify Positions.
All right. So this position, or this request came about after a position became vacant in Public Works. They did an assessment of their operational needs, and they're requesting to reclassify a Senior Office Assistant to an Administrative Assistant One position. This position is funded by the, is it the Roads Fund?
It's half roads and half solid waste.
So half roads and half solid waste. And the increase at the top of the scale, so it'd go from a Senior Office Assistant at fifty-two oh eight a month, it would increase to fifty-seven forty-two. So that's a five hundred and thirty-four dollar a month increase or ten percent. And not to put Director Public Works on the spot, but if you have any specific questions about the position, I'm sure she would be glad to step in and assist us.
Any questions that we need? No, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Here, before we step off, I just wanted to acknowledge that they are working on quite a bit right now, what's going on in the HR world, in addition to TC Connect, all the payroll items that you're working, I see your, your name on a bunch of emails. So I just wanted to give you a bit of a shout out and appreciation for, in addition to the day-to-day stuff, you're working on new policies, helping jump in with departments and critical areas to revamp things, and doing it all with a smile. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I guess I'd like to echo, that's, to me, that's an understatement of all the effort that is being laid out right now.
Yeah, I mean, I've been here, you know, and it's like, you don't know if, if it's a wave or, you know, but I've been here long enough now that I can say that it's not a wave. You guys are just really always handling a lot of stuff, and it doesn't seem to let up, you know, in any, was it COVID? Was it, you know, it's like, I had all these excuses, and now I'm starting to really feel like the HR department's gonna need some additional resources, because you guys are just constantly juggling a lot.
Make your pitch, Maria, come on. Don't let it go. Make your pitch. It sounds like I've got approval for more positions.
Shake those couch cushions, Maria. All right, then let's go to Department Item for a Contract Award for Building Number Three Roof Replacement.
As Tom comes and joins us, I wanted just to prep this item, what's, we know that we're having conversations about the courthouse. The reason this item is on the agenda is because of the timeframe to actually get the work done in good weather. Being from California, there's something called rain up here that we have to be mindful of. But what we're also mindful of is that this discussion, this item, is also going to be pending upon the discussion we have with the Commission, I think it's tomorrow, we talk about the courthouse plan. So the Capital Projects Team is, is primed with knowing that they're doing their due diligence to move this forward, but that the Commissioners may have other considerations as they hear additional information.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stremski, Capital Projects Manager for Central Services. Before you, is a request to award a contract for the Building Three Roof Replacement to Queen City Sheet Metal Roofing of Tquilla, Washington, the amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. And authorize the interim Director of Central Services to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent. A little background on the project, on July twenty-fifth, we received six bids from contractors, with the lowest bid being, the parent lowest bid being three hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So this includes replacing the existing roofing with a new EPDM roof, about fifteen thousand five hundred square feet. The work is going to be done at night, so we don't interrupt the courts in their proceedings during the day. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So I guess I'm gonna look back to the County Manager, the, how, so if we're awarding, okay, you're just saying that we're having a meeting tomorrow.
Right.
And this item's for next week.
Yes.
So there might be a shift after tomorrow.
If, if that's the Commission's will.
But, but if not, we're gonna potentially be awarding this contract next Tuesday.
So we, we thought about pulling it, but if we do that, it pushes it several weeks back, which could hurt the, the window if we decide to go forward. So at this point, we're leaving it on for review.
Just in case we're ready to move forward.
Okay. Later this week, if discussions change, we're flexible.
Okay, other questions for Tom?
I, I guess I'd just ask, I mean, we're reaching a point where we need to do something.
Yes.
Buildings are gonna fall apart, right? I mean, isn't that about where we're at on the need?
We have numerous leaks that have been reported to us, that's why we're trying to address those.
There's leaks, and then there's what we've had at Building Three, which is, if you've seen, even seen the video, County Manager, of the former County Manager standing in like...
Like a shower.
Yeah, like, it even looked like a shower. It looked like, looked like someone dumping a bucket of water, you know, and writing down through the, through the atrium of Building Three. That was pretty amazing. Okay, thank you. For today. Commissioner, Item 5A, Washington Electric Vehicle Charging Program Grant Agreement for Electric Vehicle Chargers at Thurston County Facilities, Rebecca Harvey. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rebecca Harvey, Climate Mitigation Senior Recovery Manager. So what I bring to you today is a second Department of Commerce Grant Award. This is separate from the one that the Board approved last week for the Tonino Project. This one is to install EV chargers for county-owned fleet vehicles to help us meet our fleet electrification goals. Thurston County was awarded a total of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the Washington State Electric Vehicle Charging Program for two sites. This is divided as a hundred and fifty-three thousand for twenty Level Two charge ports at the atrium Patterson Lot across the street, and thirty-two thousand for four Level Two ports at the Waste and Recovery Center. The grant covers seventy-five percent of the total eligible project costs, up to a maximum of seventy-five hundred dollars per port, plus one thousand dollars per parking stubout, which are, means electrical equipment for future EV chargers for up to three stubouts at the Patterson Lot and two at the WARC. So that's where those totals of one fifty-three and thirty-two thousand come from. And in addition to the grant, the county has been accepted into Puget Sound Energy's Up and Go for Fleet Incentive Program, which will provide up to four thousand dollars per charge port, which adds up to more than the required twenty-five percent match. And I am working with project managers in Central Services and Public Works to manage each of these sites, and the work will take place in the first and second quarters of 2025. And I'm here to answer any questions you have. Thanks.
Commissioner Edwards.
That, you was mentioning across the street, that's a fenced-in area, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Where the county vehicles are parked.
And Rebecca and I chatted about like electric vehicles being placed into this facility or facilities nearby. And she, Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, going off the memory of our conversation, but you relayed that we have a four-year obligation to have those units in play at a certain location. But if we were to move from this site, we could take those charging stations with us to a new site after the four years. And so since we're in this building for five years, that helped me feel better about the investment we're making. We would have the, that hardware that if we go to a different site and looking at what we're trying to accomplish with the long-term courthouse plan, those units could effectively go with us. Rebecca, did I communicate anything?
That's correct. Thank you for raising that, County Manager. The grant program requires that Level Two chargers be operational for four years. So that's right. After that, that we've met the grant requirements and they could be moved, as the County Manager said. And also after that, we would not necessarily need to continue a network service. We've budgeted for network services for, for five, I think, five years, just to be conservative, but that would save us maintenance or operational costs after the four years.
You, you said something like, when you said the grant cover is like seventy-five percent, and then there were plus this, that and the other, and then you said something about fleet incentive program and you, and you, and now, or you said something about that being, how does that connect? It sounded like you were saying maybe there's this other thing that connects to the matching requirement. I didn't quite understand how that all fits.
Yeah, sorry, I did go through that quickly. So Puget Sound Energy has a program called Up and Go Electric for Fleet. They have Up and Go Electric for Home Chargers and other contexts as well, but their fleet incentive program provides up to four thousand dollars per charge port. We were accepted into the program for both of these sites. I'm meeting with them this week, on Thursday, to kind of learn the next steps and the specifics. But it is, it's allowed to be a matching fund for this particular grant. And so just, I, I just gonna meet with them to make sure that the specific eligibility criteria for the grant and for their program align. And that will cover the matching costs, because I went into this application understanding that the county does not have budget for the matching costs. So we have found it with PSE's incentive program.
That's awesome. That's a pretty huge thing to highlight, so thank you. And from my understanding, Rebecca, that you put these applications together, or did you have help from some other parts of county staff, or how did this all get put together?
This, yeah, I, I put this application together. This was actually a fairly streamlined commerce application back in December. Since then, since we've been awarded, I've been working very closely with Rick Thomas and Central Services, who, she's on the call today, and also more recently with Matt Samuelson in Public Works. And we have our, our, our team, the two of them, I will be managing each of the sites. And we've been getting our ducks in a row and making sure, you know, we're, we're comfortable and the departments are both comfortable with the estimated costs for each of the sites. And we have, we have achieved that comfort level, to my understanding. The, I'll just add one more thing, which is that the, the estimated costs we have pencil out nicely for the Patterson Lot. It looks like we will be able to complete it completely with these funds that we have. The WARC lot, there may be a deficit of, of, up to ten thousand or so, just based on our estimates, because that's only four chargers, we don't have the economies of scale to cover the full project there. I'm still hopeful that it might, you know, once we bid it out, the costs might come within that total grant and PSE funding amount. But if they don't, Public Works has agreed to cover, you know, this small few thousand or up to ten thousand or so of additional costs.
Thank you. Really appreciate the work. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to 6A, Public Health and Social Services Amendment One to Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program Contract with Washington State Healthcare Authority. Katie Strozek is listed as contact. Good morning.
Thank you, Katie Strozek, Obvious and Overdose Response at Public Health. This is gonna be Amendment One to our existing contract with Healthcare Authority for the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. Healthcare Authority ended up having additional funding that they didn't expect to have, so they allocated it across the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Programs in the state. For us, they allocated forty thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars, which increases our total contract amount to one million one hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. Our actual contract amendment from them just updates the language to match state language and then adds the underspent funding from the state. There's no deliverable changes or anything like that, it's just additional funding for us, and it does not change the contract duration as well. This will still go through June of 2025.
Questions? Nope, okay, and I think we have another LEAD-related item on 5, 6B. Contract K-7593 with Washington State Healthcare Authority for LEAD Programming.
Yeah, so this is, once again, Healthcare Authority ended up with funding that they did not anticipate having, that they're allocating to Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Programs in the state. This is one-time expansion funding specifically for operation expansion. It's not expected to last beyond June of next year. We're being allocated four hundred and five thousand dollars, and it's specifically being allocated to things like training, licensure, transportation expansion, and participant support services, since it will not continue after the June thirtieth date of next year. Both this and Amendment One will be added in through amendment to the existing contract with Olympic, Olympic Health and Recovery Services, because it is all based on participant supports and client services within the LEAD program, and they hold our existing contract.
Okay, so good news, basically, on these two. Questions for Katie? Thank you. Let's go on to, well, that's it. We got Commisioner Reports, no public hearings, that covers that. So next up is Review of Transportation Benefit District Draft Agenda for the Meeting of August twentieth, which would be called to order at four PM. The President of the Transportation Benefit District.
Don't keep going, man, I'm fine.
Is Commissioner Mahia, so I'm gonna turn the phones on to the President.
I'm happy to take it. Go ahead. Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. This will be the second Transportation Benefit District meeting for the year. The, call the meeting to order, approval of the agenda, and then approval of the meeting minutes from the March nineteenth meeting. The opportunity for the public to address the Transportation Benefit District. And then the, the single department item will be a discussion on funding opportunities for the Transportation Benefit District. So this was a request out of the March meeting, and so we will follow up with some of the items that the Board had requested on those.
And so just to recap, Marcy did send the email, an email with the minutes, so Commissioners can take a look at those before the meeting, and let her know if there's any changes. And I, well, it says no action required. I, I do kind of want to get a sense of where the Board is at with funding opportunities at that meeting, and just kind of get a lay of the land of how we're going to proceed with TBD and, and, and funding it. So be ready for that conversation, I guess, is kind of what I'm trying to relay to the Board at our next meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Jennifer. All right, then we'll go on to Item Three, Proclamations and Awards. Clerk of the Board.
Commissioners, I have no further updates other than what was provided during the agenda review.
And looking at our proclamation schedule, the two we're doing next week will cover August, and we'll have a chance to review September's at a future agenda setting. And those two proclamations are drafts, are in your packet. Advisory Boards and Commissions?
Thank you. I have three advisory boards to provide updates on. That is the Board of Equalization, Law and Justice Council. That is the Board of Equalization, Law and Justice Council, and the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District Board, or CAR PFD. My intent is to provide you with this information today, not necessarily receive any direction. First, regarding the Board of Equalization, I regretfully inform you of the passing of Mr. John Morrison, age eighty-nine. Mr. Morrison served on the Board of Equalization for twenty-seven years. He recently suffered a medical emergency, but was otherwise healthy mentally and physically up until then. He intended to retire from V O E at the end of his term in March. So the Board of Equalization recommends that Ted may be appointed as a regular member for the remainder of Mr. Morrison's unexpired term. Ted currently serves as an alternate member on the V O E and his current term also expires March one of 2025. Ted applied earlier this year for a regular member seat when two regular, regular member terms expired. The board decided to continue his appointment as an alternate member at that time. But he is still interested in the regular member seat and is eligible.
How long has he been an alternate?
Since 2017.
Okay.
Just note that regarding the Law and Justice Council, just note that there was a miscommunication on the Law and Justice Council applications. The Law and Justice Council has an active recruitment for the two representatives of community-based organizations that closes on August twenty eighth. So the Law and Justice Council will then review the applications received at their next meeting, which is in mid-September. At that time, I will bring their recommendation and the applications back for your review.
And if Commissioner Claus mentioned a reappointment, that person has plenty of time to get their reappointment requested. Did you happen to see anything put in the language? We were asking about the charter and whether it's specific about the kind of community organization this?
Yeah, the charter does not define community-based organization. The preference has been given to law and justice-related.
Probably the Law and Justice Council would obviously take into consideration how closely connected.
Yeah, because they'll be making the recommendations. And Amy did consult Leah. We really appreciate her reaching out and connecting with Amy because she provided more context as to what their process is. And we want to be in alignment with that as best we can.
So it sounds like somebody from a more distantly connected group would not be prohibited, but they might not, they might not be as competitive.
Yeah, I just don't want like unintentional exclusion based on like, you know, just, you know, internal understandings instead of like the actual, yeah, yeah.
No, I understand that. It's pretty broad.
Okay.
Well, then bring those to the Law and Justice Council, I guess, regardless, and let them chew on, on that. In terms of saying, versus saying, oh, you're ineligible because you're not in it. But that was, yeah.
And flavors change, you know, or understandings change as well.
Okay, and then you had Capital Facilities District?
Yes, just a quick update that I've received just this morning, the City of Lacey's recommendation and the three total applications that were received for the vacancy on the Capital Regional, Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District Board. So I will distribute those to you this week.
Lacey, so maybe if I understand that, Lacey, it's a Lacey seat and they're going to be forwarding a name or?
No, the City of Lacey has historically facilitated the recruitment process for this board.
Oh.
And so they, in the spring, facilitated a recruitment, spring through early summer. And Mayor Ryder has provided recommendation.
To us?
Yes, to us, the City of Olympia and the City of Tumwater as well.
And at the last meeting, I requested to see like, if we could request thorough view of all the applications.
Right.
And so I would still like that.
Yes, I'll provide all applications.
You will? When will you see those?
I can email those out to you today.
How many are there? Three? But Lacey's council is recommending one, but it's our decision?
It's a
Did you say three or thirty?
There are three applications received, sorry. The City of Lacey has provided recommendation for every, every jurisdiction, so Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, and Thurston County need to take action.
We all have to kind of
Similar to the library.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
There's, I see Perry was not eligible. What was that about? Ineligible, what's this?
I don't have that
Priscilla?
Priscilla?
Terry? Is that for Law and Justice?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just because the, the seat is required to be a representative of a community-based organization? And Ms. Terry, I think, was just
Boy, she's got a lot of organization.
She's in an organization, that's what people were saying, but, you know, and so that's why I was saying, like, rather than saying ineligible or not, like, let the Law and Justice Council decide if, or, because they're going to make, you know, when I was on the Law and Justice Council and we seated those people, we were looking at people that were connected to law and justice-connected issues. You know, if she were a, I'm on the Capital Land Trust Advisory Committee, okay? You know, maybe you're qualified, but you might not get selected because there might be somebody with more subject matter expertise. Ms. Terry has been a volunteer on the Innovative Justice Committee, even though that's not an, she, she's just been an independent member of that committee, but she obviously, I would say she has a lot of, and she's been on the T S T.
T S T.
Yeah, community advisory. So she has, I think, some qualifications that the Law and Justice Council would want to consider.
Thank you. Just as an information point, the Law and Justice Council is not scheduled to meet again until September nineteenth.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? All right, then we're going to Commissioner Items. Anything, Commissioner Mihia?
I do have one. It's, when we do our fair update on the numbers, I'm wondering if it's possible to do a recognition and thanks for Teresa. You know, this was her last fair, but not really her last. I know she's still going to be involved. But I think just showing an appreciation for all of the work that she's done. She's been part-time, but I know the work that she's put in has been more than just part-time. It's been really dedication of, of heart and soul that has gone into the fair. And so just a recognition from the board.
When is this fair update that you're talking about?
I'm not sure. And I know that staff is still gathering up the numbers and things and it's probably going to get, but when they do, that's
Yeah, she's
They're still working on the pancake counter to figure out. I'll check in with Tom C N when she provides the numbers. We'll make sure that that's included as well. I know that it is difficult for Teresa to get enough work during the day. So it might just be something that she'll watch later.
Yeah, we can, someone can take the video clip and email it to her. Make it easy for her, right? You know, versus saying, go find the, the meeting and the video and we said something about you, like, put it right there. Just click there and
We'll make it easy for her.
Yeah. That'd be good. Okay, good idea. Other Commissioner Items? Commissioner Edwards?
Any update on the legal lot process? Is that coming up? Or I know you were working on it.
Ashley and the CPED team are working on putting the language together for the board to review.
What does that mean, legal lot?
So Commissioner Edwards brought to our attention the process for an innocent purchaser. So someone purchases a lot and it has maybe been subdivided but not recorded. And so there's confusing information. The way that our process currently works is to have that purchaser have the lot become a legal lot. Has to go through the hearings examiner process, which costs an extra additional amount of time and money. Commissioner Edwards asked if it could be administrative process to save that time and money. So we're working on one of the buckets that the board decided on the docket to have urgent code review updates. This is going to likely fit into that, but we need to have the language ready to go for the board to review.
And in the background on that, what's happened on a lot of different properties that when they change hands, they've been paying taxes on it for thirty years as a lot, thinking they're going to build a house or do whatever they're going to do with it. Might change hands numerous times. And the purchasers don't know that there's any kind of a problem with it. So they might have been paying taxes thirty years at a pretty good rate. And all of a sudden, they're told, oh, you can't move forward with your project because it's not a legal lot. Is that a breakdown?
So in this case in particular, it's like the subdividing of a lot. And there's documentation that the lot was subdivided, but it wasn't recorded. And so what the hearings examiner requires is documentation that X happened at a certain amount of time and then she approved. Hearing examiner approves it. What we're saying is not to change any of those requirements, just to shift it from a hearings examiner review to administrative review.
Got it. Okay. Anything else before we?
Commissioner, one item I'll just mention is, you know, with, currently we have three assistant county managers. As Robin Campbell, who's on the well-deserved and needed vacation, is working towards retirement in December. We've been talking internally about when a briefing comes up that doesn't necessarily fall in one of their portfolios. You see the new structure, that they don't necessarily need to be part of that briefing per se. I think this is my, my way of trying to give the assistant county managers a little bit more space. There's a lot going on right now, a lot of coordination that they're working on. And so they're absolutely invited to attend any briefing they'd like, but we're just talking about what's the best use of time? And do we really need three all the time? There are some meetings, like the official board meeting, the agenda setting, some of these, or some county-wide topics that will be here. But we'll look to find ways to cut them loose and allow them time to be out there, working on other things like Public Health or TC Connect or some of these big projects that we have working on right now.
I think that's totally wise. I don't know how you guys do your real job when you're in here all day long.
Well, we'll partner, divide and conquer, but I think we have a very strong team. And, you know, I appreciate their willingness to round things up and work with department heads so that we can provide a value-added service.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary. I see that our council is, is available. Can I ask council a question or?
Good morning.
Right, right on cue.
Commissioner Edwards has a question for you.
I just have a quick question that I'd like to have clarified. So we're a board of five county commissioners. And if we're going to pass a firm an issue, for an example, we need a majority of that vote, that board to vote, which is three. So three to two, the, the item is approved. So if somebody is missing, for whatever reason, and there's four present, then we still need three, because otherwise it'd be a tie.
Yeah.
So then, when two are missing, does that mean an item can move forward with a vote of two of the three?
I don't, I don't, I don't think that, I don't know if that's a legal question. That's like
Yeah, what's your quorum?
Well, it's Robert, it's Robert's rules. I was just wondering, so
The quorum never changes. Pardon? The quorum never changes, right? You know, it's always, it's always three of five, no matter what.
Three or five.
Three of five is the majority.
I don't know the answer to that. That's what I'm asking. And it might, it might show under Robert's rules, what I'm wondering about. If
Is the majority of the quorum or majority of the whole?
Yes, that's what the deal is.
Two out of three pass or is it take three votes?
Or is it, no. It's not, it's not a majority of those present. It's not a majority of those present. It's always I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah. Boards are different on that, so I would let Scott to tell us.
So that's, is that a legitimate question for council?
I think so, yeah.
I think it's a question for me to look at. I certainly am not going to give you an answer now.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, we, I can foresee issues coming up where we might have something moved forward, for whatever reason, it moved forward with two votes out of five.
Think, think about like when, you know, like the members of Congress go into hiding to prevent votes, it doesn't change. I'll put a hundred dollars right now.
Okay, I just don't know the answer.
I'm confident in my answer.
And when I don't know, I don't mind.
Are we running a casino now? Is that what's happening?
Yes. I'm just saying that I've seen, like, I think with the state building code council, we ended up in court on the very question. And, and we were getting, and we were getting unclear answers from the Attorney General's office about the answer. I mean, it goes to your bile, I mean, I, I, I think the answer is, there's not like a, you can structure it how, how you want. I think it's not, and again, maybe it's different because the Board of County Commissioners is the legislative authority of the county. We may have some confining statutes that, that will give the answer. But by and large, with various groups that you might serve on, you have the latitude to say one way or the other. Hundred bucks. Who wants to take the bet?
No, I don't want to bet. That's what come I'm asking.
I remember one time in a, in a, in a, in a Thurston County Democrats meeting, we got into this. And, and it was like, it was like if I wa, and I, and I, and I thought it was crazy. I'm like, so if I just drop off the, like, if I just drop off the phone, like, it changes the outcome of this thing? Because now you have a different number of people. Yeah.
Yeah, the quorum is smaller.
You think it's two, outside of three pass? I, I think that five people is the board number and three is a majority, no matter who's in the room. If there's three of us in the room
We all have to agree then.
Yeah, yeah. The, I, I believe that the voting number to pass something doesn't change regardless.
And I don't know if it's different here in the, the state of Washington, but where I came from, the number that attended the meeting never changed the majority vote. And that was specific because in California, there were some items that were super majority, we needed four. And so if you, if you only had three members, that item couldn't be presented to the board at that time because you didn't have the fourth person.
It was no possibility. With the building code council, we had a requirement that we pass something. And the, the, but the law said if we got two-thirds, then it, it passed and it just, that's the, the law. If we failed, if we passed it by a majority but not two-thirds, it, it was like a recommendation to the legislature. So we passed it by two-thirds of the people present, but one guy wasn't there. And so we were actually short of the two-thirds of the total. And then we were challenged that we didn't actually have the two-thirds, so it had to go to the legislature. I'm starting to doubt my Well, I've been I, I have held meetings where not everybody was present and I've just gotten a majority of those present to vote to pass something.
But if we get something, something ticklish, that's all I'm asking.
No, it's very good to have clarity.
I think
I'm glad you asked the question because
Here's where I'm betting, my, here's where I'm putting my money. You have to have a quorum to conduct an official meeting.
Correct.
And then it's a majority of those present.
You just changed your position.
That's my new bet. That's my new bet.
And that's not what I
I think you were right the first time, Commissioner Fornia, but I'm not sure. I think it's like you've got your, you need to have a quorum to have a meeting, but in order to pass anything, you probably need the majority, the three.
It's a majority of those present.
I'm going to look into it and I'll, I'll let you
My money is now on it's a majority of those present.
I've seen it, I've seen it go both ways. So that's why I, I've always been a little confused.
Yeah.
I think it probably determined depends on what you've decided to pass initially as a board. You know, what, what you're following, what, what structure are you using, if it's Robert's rules or something else?
So if we get into something ticklish, we ought to know the answer. That's all.
If there's three present, it's those present that make the decision and that's the board's decision.
And thank you for being here, Scott.
That's it.
Scott will come back. I think there's a definitive answer out there later.
Thank you, Scott.
Other Commissioner Items? We're back at eleven with our appointed directors meeting, so if nothing else, we'll be adjourned till then.